...that engage students in hands-on science. Your dedication, creativity, and passion for learning truly embodies Wildcat pride. Thank you very much.
So Ben, we are really thrilled to have the school for us. Now that we have access and we have a pavilion, we have space, but none of that matters unless we have teachers who are creative and have the vision to be able to get out there and get our kids there. And you clearly are one of the shining stars in this. So, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
I would just say too, Ben, thank you for helping children fall in love with a Kinni.
Yes. All right. We also have some reports this evening, and the first ones will be from our student representative, Selben Jada.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about, um, why should I honk? This makes me feel good, you know?
Personally.
Yeah, yeah. I'll start a little about the school and all that stuff. You know, things have been going well at the school. I think people are starting to get tired a little bit, you know, leading up to the break as they always do, especially after ending the first quarter and things are getting all those tests and everything. But I think students are pushing through. I think teachers are pushing through, which is good. Unfortunately, I think all of our fall sports are closed for now. Football team just, their season ended to a very, very, very good Notre Dame Academy team. So, I talked to many players on the team, and none of them were super upset about the fact that, like, that the season ended the way it did because they all felt that the results throughout the season is what really mattered and not what the final goal was, especially knowing how good that Notre Dame team, who has been to the state championship, I believe, three out of the four past years. So, they've been a very solid team. I think the volleyball team's season ended as well. But once again, another thing where I don't think they were necessarily like, obviously at that point, they loved the season and they were proud of how it went. So, no ill feelings towards that, you could say. But yeah, everything at the school, from my perspective, has been pretty solid, you know? Just like I said, the fatigue leading into the break has been something noticeable, but that's expected, so.
All right. Nice.
Yeah, to begin the second term, students are settling into things and routines, the new transition into the second term. As of student council at the moment, we are planning the upcoming Winter Wonderland Week, and we want to do a full spirit week with dress-up themes of winter-related, with door decorating competitions, and several winter-themed activities offered during late starts and win. And our goal is to create a fun, positive atmosphere to bring more students together during the winter months. We also recently just celebrated World Kindness Day. Student council members stayed after school, and we wrote personalized kind notes to the students, and we put them on every student's locker so that he could come to that in the morning. And that's all I have for today.
Well, we did, we got to see a picture of some of the notes, the sticky papers and a board update. They looked great, and they all looked unique.
Thank you.
So, I'm sure that took quite a bit of time. But also, my guess is most people recognize that it's even more than the sticky paper itself. It really is the kindness that is reflected. So, thank you for that. Thank you both. Okay, administrative reports, and I think it's Meyer Middle School first?
Oh, sorry, I was gonna ask, did we, there's nothing that says South when you said River Falls High School, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss over that or something.
Oh, do you? I didn't want to put you on the spot. If you're ready to talk about it.
No, I was just, I was just like, I didn't want to.
We can table it.
Could we do that another time?
Okay, sounds great, yeah, yeah.
Next time, and then we'll talk with you about the kind of information that we're hoping to hear from the two of you.
Sounds great.
You're the ones that can give us some good feedback. All right, Mark.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Those two Wildcat pride awards just remind me of the amazing teachers we have, because my daughter Emma had Mr. Topol and just adored him, and what an exceptional educator. And then my son Matthew's been a marching band for four years and just had such an amazing experience. You know, his confidence really grew, his leadership abilities grew, and being part of something bigger than yourself is really cool. So, yeah, kudos to Jacob and Jake and to Mr. Topol. All right, so our Wildcat goal, wildly important goal. Very cool.
There we are.
We decided to pivot this year, and I would say hindsight's 2020 as a leader. Three years ago, we laid out a plan. We rolled out standard-based grading, and then we're going to focus on our common sum of assessments, and then we're going to work on our common formative assessments. And if we just did standard-based grading alone last year, that would have been enough on our teacher's place. And so, if I had a do-over, I would have started with this goal because it more closely aligned to where we should have been going at that time. And there'll come a point where we're going to focus on mid-year cumulative and end-year cumulative assessment. But for this year, we're pivoting and focusing just on our common sum of assessment data. And we did also change it to be more aligned with the rest of the schools by shooting for 100% of our students will be proficient on 90% of the standards measured by their unit assessments. So, we're moving away from that mid-year and end-of-the-year, focusing on that sum of assessment in every unit tied to our standards. So, each core teacher has already designed their unit assessments that are aligned. One of the things I'm really proud of with our teachers is our operation time that takes place every Thursday. They're really, this is part of what we do now, which I think is great. We're starting to see some really great results. I'll do a quick shout-out for our math department. For years, we've been trying to compare ourselves to Osceola, one of the best middle schools, and during the time, we were 30% lower than Osceola, and now we're just 3% lower in terms of proficient in advance or meeting in advance than Osceola on their math scores for grade 6-3. So, that's something we're really proud of as well. So, as you know, we transitioned to standard-based grading, so this fits really neatly with that. Part of that is looking at that disconnect that we saw between letter grades and how our kids were performing on the forward exams. So, that was one of our rationales or why for why we didn't transition to standard-based grading. Been tracking that data for a long time. So, we're asking teachers to use a common data protocol after they give a unit assessment, compare what's going well. If one teacher is, you know, doing really all one standard, we want to learn from each other. That's part of what the PLC does. I've linked our forward data. That's almost nine years' worth of data now. If you're really bored, you can dive into that. There's a lot of trend data in there. The qualitative factors that influence our decision, again, is in that sequence of looking at building really high-quality common sum of assessments. But the other part of that is where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck is creating common formative assessments. And that, again, aligned with our three-year plan that we had planned out anyway. And so, one of the things I want to jump ahead to is this slide here. And so, we call it response days. You can call it workshop. You can call it a lot of things. I think elementary does a really good job with small group teaching based on assessment data. So, if you look at students that, you know, majority of the class is not meeting the standard, you're going to do a whole-group reading. If 50 to 74%, you know, mixed mastery, some are getting it, some not, we got to look at doing some flexible grouping, so small teaching. 75 to 80, again, that's a pivotal point. What do we do with that information? And so, we're asking teachers to do small-group instruction, and then if 90% or higher of the class is doing well, we just move on. So, how this aligns, how the, hold back up to the commitments. What is our belief that all students can learn at high levels? I mentioned our PLC meetings with conversations around student learning, how to best respond to students' marked learning. That's those are those response days. We're following a common data protocol. We have a common assessment calendar. It is pretty amazing. As tricky as this can be, our teachers are within a couple of days of teaching the same lesson and giving the same assessments, which is, I think, challenging to do, but our teachers do a great job. And then those use of response days. We selected these because they have a high effect size, as John had his research, and they also answer the big four questions, especially those last two questions are what do we do if kids are learning and what do we do when they're not learning? So, not just the kids that aren't learning, but what do you do to enrich and challenge and push those students that are? You can do that through response day type of lesson. How we're tracking this is through artifacts. We have PLC notebooks that each team has through their data collection in classroom environments. So, that's our goal, and we'll record and share with you mid-year where we're at with our unit assessments. Thanks, Mark.
I have a question for you, Mark. So, I'm imagining on the responding to data, each one of those categories presents its own challenges. What happens when we have 90% of the kids who are there, but we still have some students who are not getting it? What happens then?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. We have our win type, which is one thing that we're doing. So, win is about a lowest 10% better for math and reading. You don't want to do it for all subject areas, but for math and reading, they're getting extra interventions during that time, which takes place daily, and they have to hit certain thresholds before they graduate out. Our sixth-grade math teachers, really proud of them, they have volunteered during their study all time to pull in what we call the tier-two intervention, which is something that's been lacking in our middle school. And that's the next group up from that lower 10th percentile, and they're taking that group from 10th to the 24th, 25th percentile, and they're either doing pre-teaching, some of those skills are stripped, you know, deficits that the kids might have right now. They are, so they're pre-teaching, and they're doing some reteaching. Katrina Bell, who teaches six blue, she just mentioned, there's kids that don't normally raise their hands. After doing some pre-teaching, they have the confidence to participate in class, which is just a really good qualitative piece of information that I thought was really good. But we're hoping to model that then in both seventh and eighth-grade math next year as well as reading. So, this is a great pilot. Again, we have some teachers that are stepping up to volunteer to do this. I think it's going to pay dividends.
So, is it an accurate way for me to think about this? That this is what's happening in the classroom, but then there are additional structures of our multi-tiered systems of support that go, that kick in for those kids? Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah, universal good instruction, high-quality teaching and learning. So, I would say that those responses are a tier-two intervention. We also are doing some of this, you know, study all time. We're having kids get extra support that way as well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That was a question. In the, inside the data, I just was opening up the data. Is this forward test the one that changed what we're?
Yep.
Okay, so, it looks like it's up like 13%. That doesn't really mean it's up 13%.
If you look at, so what I do is I compare it to state, and then I compare it to other districts. So, there was, you'll notice in reading and writing, the percentage of students that were meeting or scoring in bands went up across the state. The scale scores changed. So, we look at that, right? But then we also look at, okay, how much did Hudson go up? How much did originally go up? How much did we go up? And then we look at how much the state went up.
Yep.
And so, we've, if you look at our math scores, the jump that we made in the last two years is pretty remarkable.
Darn good. Yeah, great.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much. All right, River Falls High School, you're up next.
Good evening, everyone. We're just gonna, I'll give you a quick recap, and then Heidi and Lisa are going to kind of talk about the data that we have this year just a little bit. So, for our fall update, we did make some changes to our wildly important goal. One of the major changes was we were embedding assessments within classes as academic practice and trying to pull that data became challenging, as we shared with you in the spring when we had thousands of examples of that, trying to aggregate that data for individual students became an extreme challenge for us. We have still embedded our teacher practice in that, so the students are still having those literacy-like assessments embedded into their curriculum. We know that that is still valuable. We saw that throughout all of last year in our week. This year, with the conversations that we've had, both with UCU's central office and others, is we are looking at it differently with whole-school data. So, now we're having three different checkpoints for us. One we just had in the fall. We'll have another one coming up roughly in December, January, December, January, yep, and then one with our regular March. So, we have three assessments that all students are taking, which we're going to share that data with you tonight. And we're really excited for our second round of assessments because having just one point of data isn't really something that we're feeling confident of dropping in and making huge adjustments to at this particular point in time. But again, our goal is to have all of our students sustain and have mastery of reading comprehension. The terms, the leverage performance of that, the activity level performance, has not changed. We have all of our students falling into one of three categories, either basic, proficient, or mastery. What we have done is aligned those two redacted assessments or other types of standard assessments. If you recall, last year, we had our staff create those assessments. And again, with the fidelity of that across classes, across teachers, we have increased fidelity with that coming into this year. So, we're really getting baseline growth, and we're seeing where our students are at. In the transition, one of the things that Heidi's going to talk about that we also did is we did tie our assessments to specific standards, and I'm going to let Heidi kind of introduce that first portion of that.
So, staff have been really excited, being able to have like a standard-building assessment, right? For each grade level, to be able to have that comparative data. One of the things that was really important for staff was it for it to be related directly to reading standards, right? And so, all of the reading standards are actually like written in two-year clumps, so ninth and 10th grade standards are together in one, and then 11th and 12th grade standards are together in one. So, one of the things that we navigated when creating the assessment was trying to look at the specific articles and which one we thought particular grade levels would be most appealing to grade levels, right? And then also the identification of the specific standards. Now, the standards that we picked that are up there, you'll notice that there's six of them. The main focus ones, though, were R1, R2, and then R8. So, the first two at the top and then the one at the very, very bottom. So, those are pertaining to like key ideas and details, right? Being able to have that. The other one was summarization, and then the evaluation of an argument. Many of our teams, when we were identifying this with our PLC leaders in terms of the focus areas, it was those standards that we thought, not only, that we noticed in the ACT from last year from our summer data dig, right, but also for classroom teachers when we started looking at content reading, those that they thought would most directly align and carry over. So, taking that information and those specific standards, then, we created particular blueprints for the tests. And so, each one of the tests had 10 questions, and each one of those questions focused in on one to two specific skill areas. And that will carry for each of the assessments that we give in the fall and then in the winter. And then the spring assessment is the statewide assessment, right? But it allows us then to be able to really identify specific question areas and the growth for students in those particular areas. You'll notice for the priority ones that teachers had selected, that those are tested on or focused on more readily. So, the R1, the R2, and then the R8. One of the other areas that through this that we've noticed is vocabulary. So, one of the conversations that we'll be considering for subsequent years is do we like tweak that blueprint in future years? But we know the R1, R2, and R8 will stay consistent as we move our way through that. So, now you'll be able to see the data. Lisa's going to also hand around, though, specific ones where you'll be able to see it bigger for each of the grade levels, because we know that it can get small in there, but we wanted you guys to be able to see the pie charts side by side for the data table that is up there. So, on here, you'll notice the specific results for each of our grade levels, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, because we only tested those knowing that they're going to have the spring test here coming up, so that we would have those three data points. In the data list there, there's two different tables. The first one is the pie chart, and that shows the overall classroom performance. Now, remember last year when we talked, and all of a sudden, I was saying that like 70 and 80% of our kids in every class were proficient, and they're saying, but on the statewide performance piece, it's only saying that like 40% of our kids are showing that proficiency of scoring above a 19. These tests were used creating our polls from actual test databases that are directly aligned to the ACT, right, and have the standards embedded and give direct feedback specific to each of those standards. So, we were able to then know, right, where those are, and you'll see that the level of mastery that's identified on there is much closer to where our students are actually performing, which was the part that our teachers were greatly like impressed by, or that they, was very good for them to be able to see. Now, there's a number of learning pieces as we went through this, too. So, one thing that you'll notice is looking at the pie charts that are up at the top for our ninth graders, it shows that there is a 51% level of mastery, right? 10th grade is 64.7% mastery, and 11th grade was 50.4% mastery. Now, we know that our 11th graders last year, when they took the ACT or the practice ACT, were at a 40% level of proficiency, scoring above a 19, or 20 or above on the ACT, so showing some growth from last year, but being a lot closer alignment there versus our sophomore class that was there had shown a 44% proficiency last spring on that practice ACT. At the bottom, you'll see the actual skills that were tested and the performance bands for each of those specific skills that we identified for the standards, okay? Now, like I said, when we first created these assessments, we looked at the specific articles that we thought kids would be most intrigued by. You'll notice at the bottom, though, the 10th grade one had four specific area skills that we were homed in on, 9th grade had five, and then 11th grade had six. Once we actually delved into the data, one of the big points of conversation that we noticed was probably in subsequent years, we should actually consider flipping these two, right, and having four tested in 9th grade, four skills tested in 9th grade, five skills tested in 10th grade, and six skills tested in 11th grade versus what we did this year, focusing more on the specific readings, right, that were coming out for how they were initially created, and that might influence some of the data there as well. But teachers were actually then able to go in for their specific data, and they were able to have theirs disaggregated to be able to delve specifically into each of theirs. And we did a data watch with our teachers. So, they were able to see those performance bands across the entire building, and then they could go into the software and they could pull the data specific for the students that they were serving in each of their classes, to know band-wise where their students were, what specific skills were their students struggling in. And one of the things that you'll notice is we have two particular grade levels where vocabulary was a heavy need, right? So, then our PLC teams, like Mr. Chapin talked about, were able to actually have data on our discussions on them, okay? And one of the beautiful things that we've been able to do is throughout the summer, and came to this fall partnering with Mr. Chapin and CAT, was creating standard data protocols that our staff have been able to use at both the middle school and high school, which has been really, really nice. And so, those have carried into our PLCs where staff were able to discuss those. So, the other handle that you have there is the actual wave discussion sheet that we use with our staff, where you can see they were able to record what was the performance of our ninth graders, our 10th graders, our 11th graders, and then specifically comparing the classes that they serve and what the needs might be of those students. And then they used that data and jumped into their teams to then be able to discuss like, what are the needs of the specific students that we're serving, and how might that vary in 9th grade or 10th grade, right? Science versus maybe in an English or a social studies class and specific to the students that they're serving right now in this term. And then our teams were able to then go back and say, how am I going to respond to that? And what am I going to do with that data, knowing the specific needs of my students? And so, that's going to come into some of the things that Lisa's going to talk about here in a little bit, for how some of our teams have morphed and shifted their content literacy-focused areas. But really, all of this feeds into that PLC process, right? And on the back of that data sheet, you'll notice that the individual reflection questions that we were asking a number of our teachers to really reflect on, or how could they possibly influence the data? What might create shift in their specific practices? Overall, we have a ton of celebrations to look at compared to where we were last year, right, when we were trying to figure out what that baseline might be. Staff were incredibly appreciative, and we are beyond excited to have norm-building data and knowing where that's pulling from verified, you know, question banks that are there, the next path dashboards, and to be able to have the pie charts, and then to be able to have the data specific to the questions, question distribution is incredible. And that actually has like classroom dashboards for the teachers as well as Renaissance DNA. And so, we give a special shout-out to Mary Beth on that one for bringing that to us here, because that has been a huge gift for us, knowing that it's directly aligned to standards, to assessments. And then now that we can actually track student by student exactly how they're performing and what their growth index might be, students can log in and see exactly where they performed in which skill areas they were struggling in. And then that consistency of the blueprint for us to be able to then pull and say, oh my goodness, students have struggled on R1 mightily, both in the fall and then in the winter. That'll really help us to be able to identify the specific standards that we need to hone in on at each grade level, right? And then really being able to have those conversations for us as administration. This has been a huge gift, too, because it's given us the opportunity to actually model data conversations across the building with our teams, and then to be able to sit in with them as they're doing their data conversations as well. When we talk about the data for that initial piece that's giving us pause, when you look at those self-skill breakdowns, the specific areas where we do have some pause when it comes to vocabulary, specific academically vocabulary, and a number of our teams have really dealt in and discussed that. And then just overall, in the same way that when we look at our reading data that led us to identify this as a focus area for the students in reading that are struggling, we learned a ton. We also learned about uncoupling standards and things like that, and I won't get into all of that, but like, we learned a ton, and so we're continuing to improve that. But we also learned the power of giving our teachers that focus and that ability to really identify the content literacy strategies. So, Lisa will talk more about that.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, if like a couple of these grades looks like the larger opportunity rests with vocabulary.
Yes.
So, what would be such an example of what a teacher would do to enhance students' vocabulary?
Yeah, so like our science team specifically, when we were sitting down with them at their PLC, they're talking about actually like breaking down, right, and being able to look at individual chunks and be able to decode, right? And then they're also talking about their specific academic vocabulary words that we know that are out there, that are really beneficial for students to know, right, and understand. And so, that's one that they're looking at and saying, which ones particularly relate to their content area that they can adopt and embed across each of their courses to make sure that students then have those, and they're not feeling like they're floundering or lost when it comes to that academic vocabulary, right?
So, the teachers know what words we're talking about?
Yes.
What vocabulary words? Like in elementary school, you get vocabulary words, right?
Yeah.
High school, you don't really.
Yes, but they're talking specific academic vocabulary words. I mean, if you were to Google, there's like a long list of them that comes up for that. But then they're also saying within their specific content or disciplinary area, the big one, science, was looking at like homo sapiens, right? Being able to say homo means this, or mono means this, right? And being able to help students really be able to understand so that they can decode words based on those individual meaning pieces. So, that was a big one for vocabulary. And then just saying, within each content area, sometimes there are ones that will kind of make kids flounder. And they were also talking about like synonyms within academic vocabulary, because oftentimes a teacher might use one word to constantly describe something, and then if they use a different word on the test, right, or when they're assessing, sometimes students have a moment of pause. So, oftentimes, teaching students not only the words, but the synonyms that can go with it, so that they're not feeling quite as lost.
Yeah. We don't actually teach Latin roots and origins anymore, do we?
There are spots where they're doing that, yes. So, science is one of those.
We actually have a whole class in it.
And then in English as well.
No, there's not.
So, English and science both have pieces.
Met-term, I'll take met-term. That's all I have.
Okay. Interesting.
So, in the last year, some of the things that we've kind of got more specific on, content literacy, we might, if you recall, there's another slide, I'll just jump to it real quick. This slide was last year, so how we started giving professional development to our teachers and teaching universal literacy strategies. The three highlighted ones were the ones that, ones that all content areas are easily able to incorporate and have really big success with that. One of those is the key vocabulary. And that's where we started. And then last spring, we, we took our PLC teams and let them go specifically into their content area. And so, that last sheet in your packet is the content literacy page, and what it started out as is a resource page for our PLC teams. And then last spring, they did research in their teams, in their PLC teams, and they adjusted the sheet to go for the things they found that they could utilize in their content areas to teach literacy and to focus on, and they did that again in the fall. And that's the, the result is the sheet that you're looking at now. So, it started with a resource, and then they updated it with what they found. So, those are the areas in each of those content areas. Those are the key literacy pieces that they're going to focus on or are focusing on to teach literacy in their content area. I want to cut about a word or so, hang on. So, we're going to continue to work with provincial development for our teachers on universal, to strengthen those, to practice those more, but also to delve into more content area literacy. Looking at data per student, having the different points of data throughout the years can be very helpful to see which students need support, and then being able to develop an MTSS system at the high school to provide interventions for those students, so that we can bring them back up to, or hopefully bring them back up to, a grade level and help them to and help them to be better and raise those scores as a result of show that. In this slide you've seen before, this is the commitments we made when we have updated just a little bit. But we're going to continue with the commitments and practices that we outlined last year. Again, our focus for PLC, one of those focuses is content literacy and really digging into being able to utilize best practices that work for our content areas that can show them growth, can show growth in those, in literacy. And so we're going to continue to collect that data, monitor it, see where the gaps lie. And then work on that developing that system of support so that we can know, what do we do about that? How do we adjust that? Some of the things are obvious, you know, one-on-one reteaching. But how do we dig in deeper? Because reading strategies and reading interventions are pretty strong in elementary and even in middle school. But there's not, there isn't stuff that's already set out there for high school, not a lot. We are finding that you can take things that are, that are created for elementary and gear them up to high school, but that doesn't work for everything. And so that is what the work we have to do yet. It's not only looking at the data and what can we pull out per student, but how do we address the skill we have?
Can I ask a quick question? I'm, I'm curious, I'm thrilled to see that there's a timeline on, on building out the tier two interventions. Looks like this year into 2027, hopefully we'll see some really positive things coming to support kids that are struggling. I'm curious about the staffing implications when you're trying to build those systems of support. How, what does that look like at the high school level?
It's different at every high school. This is the biggest challenge that we're facing. High school intervention systems are vastly different. There's a few resources that are available. One of the things our building leadership team is doing is going to go out for site visits coming up here in December and in January. We've identified key, key schools and districts in the state of Wisconsin areas that are either really high quality intervention systems that plays specifically to tier twos and threes. Or the comparable schools that we are looking at from the school to core car standpoint. The other team that we're bringing along is our cross categorical special education teams to look at what can we do from that standpoint and learn from other buildings and districts from a more inclusionary model. We still have a lot of skills development time in our schedule. And we believe that if we put our students in the regular ed classrooms more often with key, targeted interventions, we're going to see greater results also with our special ed population, which we know at times may struggle with literacy or other types of building academic goals. So we have five different site visits that we're scheduling with our building leadership team and our special ed staff with hopes to come back and report and really see what is out there to, that we can find and adapt.
Fantastic, great. I jumped over my comments about tier one too, so sorry, I had that question looming. But the work that you're doing with, with tier one, high quality instruction is great. And, and that's first and foremost, so well done.
This is not exactly connected to your data, but I'm just wondering, are we, are you seeing a shift in your experience, you're all experienced educators, in students just reading books? I mean, that's an important way of building vocabulary and understanding sentence structure and discerning, decoding text. So what do you think?
I see a lot of freshmen, eager freshmen that come in and they pick up their books and they read and all that stuff. And then by the time they get to this new year, a lot of, I think, it lessens quite a bit. But freshman, I mean, like my freshman year, I remember seeing kids like during the breaks and stuff like that, they would. But like I said, as you get through the years, it, it definitely lessens down. And I think that as your work increases in high school, you have less time to pick up a book and read that. And I don't know what kids are doing outside of class, so. But I'd say it starts at high school pretty well and then as it goes through, it dies down a little bit.
Do you think primarily due to other demands of coursework?
Yeah, I think other demands of coursework, how long that coursework is taking. Freshman year, some individuals, especially the kids who are going to be reading, tend to get through some of that freshman level or, or entry level stuff pretty fast. As in they're able to pick up a book. And I think that as, as the courses get harder and as the demand in those classes becomes more, you have less time to do so. And that's, that's truly what I think is happening. I also think that there is a certain fatigue that is like, they call it senioritis, right? Seniors just get tired of high school, right? And so I think you see that especially starting even halfway through high school and their junior year, really, it's just like, they don't want to necessarily think of something academic when they don't have to, right? So I think that's where you're seeing that. But you always have the freshman that come in and being really eager. So I think you see that starting early, but not later on.
I think that what we, we find on our side of things is just the, what they're stating is the core academics. If I just use junior year as an example with American literature, US history or A push, whatever the student is taking, there's a heavy amount of reading in our language arts and social sciences. We do still see students reading for enjoyment, not as much as maybe once was in truth. Do you agree?
Yeah, or will be. People kind of come back to it after they.
Yeah.
My kids did.
It depends. And again, it's the priorities of the student and some students, that's what they love to do. And other students have chosen other things along the way.
I mean, not to use me as an example, but I used to have a ton of time to like read at night. And so I'd, I'd read at night and then as my schedule, coursework and other things and like as my interest for other things became more, there was just less time to sit down and focus on a book. And so then over time, that habit that I'd built up of reading overnight kind of dissipated. And then now I'm at the point where it's like, I don't read as often as I probably should or even want to, but my schedule just doesn't allow the time for me to sit down with a book and read for fun and out of pure enjoyment rather than sit down with a push book and read a thing that I have to for school, right? So I think, I think my experience is similar to a lot of other high schoolers. But that's from my end and I, yeah.
I would say the way that students are interacting with text was very, right? Like tech, interaction with text versus like paper. I would say the phone pieces that you guys will talk about, like this year, I can say that I've noticed a little bit more so, like, because you can't take out a phone during work time to be able to look at something. So we have had some more students going down and getting books or they'll be, you know, delving into whatever's going on in their Google classrooms.
But I, I also mean just reading, I mean, reading on an iPad can be a beneficial thing because you've got a built-in dictionary right there. So that can be helpful. But I'll, I have another question, switching gears. So Lisa, you brought up that some of the strategies that we use to teach reading to elementary students can be geared up for high school students. I am sure that's true. Can you give us an example of something that's really effective?
Well, we talked about vocabulary, for example, and teaching vocabulary ahead of time, front loading. At elementary school, you see that front loading happening with connecting students to the material. What do they know about this topic or this type of whatever before they read? And then teaching those key vocabulary pieces that are found in the reading. And then making sure that they're just ready with those pieces because then they get into it with some knowledge. They know kind of what's going to happen, at least an idea of what the topic is. And then the words that they may stumble on, they get those ahead of time and they could probably even access them, you know, have them available to be able to utilize when they're reading. There are some other ones that are more elementary based that are, a lot of like choral reading and things like that that maybe aren't as popular in the high school, but, but might work more for one-on-one where student, you know, who's fairly low, having that either reading, like the adult reads a line and then the student rereads the same line or they take turns depending on their level, tracking when they read. So even when somebody else is reading out loud, they're tracking so they can see what word's being read. Some of those pieces can be brought up to the high school level. But you have to do it carefully so that they don't recognize that it's an elementary strategy.
I love those universals, right, can be applied across all, especially the purpose of reading, teaching kids how to annotate, right? Usually in fourth and fifth grade, like we're easily teaching kids like how to not only be able to track, but how to be able to outline key ideas and details and all sorts of things too.
Yeah, I wonder too, as the world gets more auditory with technology, the auditory and the seeing visuals of things and pictures. But when you take the tests, it's all the written word. And I wonder if that's different for kids nowadays, for people in general. I mean, I listen to podcasts all the time while I'm doing other stuff rather than reading the newspaper. And then, but then when you take the test, it's all in writing. I don't know if that makes a difference.
I think it definitely does. Like, I, I see it in myself that it's hard to stay engaged sometimes reading a book, right? But listening to something, like you said, like as a podcast, you said, it's really easy to listen to a podcast while doing something else, like cleaning, for instance. Like I, when I clean, I listen to a podcast. And that's really easy because I can do both things at the same time. And then also, it's the same thing with, it's really easy, like having, if you have a phone next to you while you're reading and get a notification on your phone to pick it up and just like look at it, right? It's so it's that easy to get disengaged from books, I think, that's definitely seen at the high school level. Especially when like kids get distracted really easy, even if they're given like an excerpt on their Chromebook to read and something's happening in the class. A kid gets up, sharpens his pencil, that's super distracting for some kids. And it really throws them out of the loop. So I think that whole like auditory and visual thing definitely has changed a lot from other time, you know, so.
Last question, I promise. I'm looking at these, at these charts and I like the color coding, but does it, it surprises me that there's so much variation in it. Does it surprise you?
We, we feel, feel the same way. That's why we're excited for assessment number two. Because we don't know, we don't know really where the bullseye is on this, right? So I think when we take a look at the second assessment, make some finer adjustments, we're really going to be able to hone in of who really does need the interventions and where our students overall by grade level are performing both individually and as a grade. We think we'll have a better read in January of where things are at.
Especially, especially when you look at the blueprint. Because for a couple of those specific skills, there's only one question that was used to test that particular skill area, right?
So the student does poorly on that one.
So it comes back to what we talked about the last time you came. How do we know what we're actually measuring?
It's still coming down to quality questions, right? We picked some assessments that we thought were engaging. We made some changes, like maybe we tested a few too many standards in certain spots. Or if you test three standards out of 10 on one, there's more of a likelihood of people showing proficiency versus one time on that out of 10 questions. So we're learning by doing again in this. I think the goal, just so you know, for next year too, still is really looking at the tier two and tier three interventions now, once we were able to identify students. We got to do something beyond the classroom and we're looking for your support in that. And again, the big part of that too is providing professional development for our staff. There's three of us plus Zach and a few others in the building. We're really going to need to provide that coaching model at some particular point in time. Not only just in literacy, but in our curriculum work, our assessment work and others along the way.
Anybody else? Thank you for your work. Thank you for being here tonight. Good luck on the next stage of this. All right, so we're going to move on to Renaissance.
Thank you, guys, for having me. My counterpart is unable to join me today, so I'll just go ahead and go through her slides as best as I can. We established our goal is to be in three parts this year. Academic, which included the reading and math, behavioral, phone usage and vape reduction, and then our program presence within our community. So by the end of, our reading goal for 1A is to, by the end of term two, have 80% of students will increase their scaled score in reading. And what we have been able to do this year have, is to, to provide to our students the STAR reading test so that we can establish some baselines. And this, the reason we decided to move with these goals is because we realized that we have, we had inconsistent data in our building. And we also realized that our students were struggling across the board in the majority of our content areas. And this is the baseline data for our reading that was just taken just a couple of weeks ago. And as you can see, our ninth and 10th graders are really doing well at 60th percentile with our 12th graders crushing it in the 70th, 71st percentile. With the grade equivalency being 11.5 and 12th grade being 13 plus. Now, the grade equivalency, don't read too much into that. That is when our students are able to achieve their highest peak. It's not a sustainable type of, of reading goal for them. So the scaled score represents the, the norms that are associated with skills that our students would need to be working on. And by utilizing the STAR testing, our ELA teachers and our BLT team will work collectively to put together some strategies to move forward our reading scores. Our, so this just talks about what we're going to be doing. We're going to be doing STAR data testing four times a year. And we revised our reading logs from last year. We mentioned about previously that we do reading twice a week for up to 30 minutes in our advisory time. After advisory reading is done, they have to fill out a reading log sheet and identify the different types of reading strategies that they utilize on that particular day in time. What we did, what we didn't do last year is that we just allowed our students to pick whatever strategy they liked to use. This time, they have to pick a sheet and that sheet correlates with a specific strategy that they have to use. And by utilizing that strategy, we're hoping to increase their, their, their strength in reading. When we are jumping to math, by term two, 80% of our students will increase their scaled score in math. And our sub-goal for this is to have 80% of our students that will take at least one math class per year. In the past, we've had some struggles getting some continuity in regards to our math. And by going to grade level math and doing more sequencing, we feel that we're going to have more success. And we're really excited because we got new curriculum for algebra and geometry and our staff has been really receptive to it. And we're really excited to say that we have 15 students taking geometry this year in the hopes that they'll go on to algebra two and maybe even a higher level math by the time they're seniors. So we're excited to be seeing that. When we are looking at our scores for our baseline data for math, we can see that our 10th graders are in the 45th percentile. 11th grade is 38th percentile with our 12th graders, our seniors being in the 22nd percentile. Our 12th graders haven't had math since probably the beginning or the end of their, mid of their junior year. So their skills probably have lapsed a little bit. And our 12th graders have struggled in the past with our math. So again, by putting in the sequencing for our math program, we're hoping that we won't see a percentile in that position moving forward. Let's see, phone usage, well, I'll just touch on this super quick. Last year, we were, we were excited to implement a phone policy in our, in our, in our building. And like I said, last year I lost sleep over it over the summer. This year, I slid into the beginning of the year with no concerns. Our students came in ready to, and ready to surrender their phones. And they have been really great about accepting the norms to how we're going to utilize technology in the classroom, which we're not. Like this is an instructional time, you're going to have your phones put away. Please and thank you, with love. I, I just tell them, I tell them, if I catch you with your phone, that's on you because I wore clicky shoes. And if you can hear me talking and I catch you, that's on you, so whatever, like, don't try and find me. So our phone usage has been, we're excited to see our phone usage down. When you see the next slide, you'll see what it's, what we started out last year versus what we started with this year and we're excited. And then our second portion of our week is that we're going to, you know, try to reduce or even stop vape, our vaping. And by that, we've had some sensors put into our, our building and we've been successful with that as well. Our goals are, we're just going to monitor it by write-ups in, in Infinite Campus. And again, we're going to have the five-day surrender on the third write-up. And to this date, we have not had anybody have to have a surrender for the, the rest of the nine weeks. We're excited about that. And to date, we also haven't had any five-day surrenders. This is the data from last year versus this year. As you can see, last year we had 32. And of course, that was a lot of poking and prodding, put your phone away, put your phone away. And then as you can see, the data indicated that students were really good about keeping their phones where they should have been. With the exception of term four, well, we had a student teacher and we had a long-term sub. So boundaries were pushed during term four. And then this year, you can see we've had one, I'm sorry, one five-day surrender. And then for 20, sorry, 2024, 2025, one day, one five-day surrender. And then this year, we've had zero five-day surrenders. And the asterisk is because we actually had two students at the high school who brought down two violations already and that was included in our data. But I wanted to exclude them from the RCA program because when they were in our, they were not in our program and they received the five, their second violation. So they're, I think, I'm really proud of them. Not I think, I know. But they're, they're handling it very well. Not I think, I know, but they're, they're handling it very well. As you can see, we've got some vape violations and some information and the data is right up there. We've had four this year, which is up from last year. You might be wondering why that is. I think the sensors are helping. I think students are reporting that they're seeing it more frequently and they're wanting it out. So therefore, we are quick to act on it and have the conversation as to, do you have a vape? Can I have it? Surrender it and do searches as needed. Our program presence, we continue to want to be out in the community. We continue to want to see more and more people get into our building. We're, we are committed to getting more students into our program. And so our goal again is to continue to have growth by 10% and to continue to, in, to continue to participate in or at least host the different community events and increase collaboration efforts with Meyer Middle School and the River Falls High School. And I think that's, we've started that, those talks already. We just know that we need to redefine who the RCA is and who this, those types of students that we serve. And I think we've made some really good progress as to where our program has been versus where we want it to be heading. And I'm excited to see that trend continue in a positive direction. We are seeing student growth from the number of students from the high school to the RCA. We're seeing more and more families inquire about coming to the RCA through open enrollment and our presence at being at a variety of community events and hosting community events. And the partnering is, is definitely being noticed because we're getting a number of phone calls throughout the course of the, of the year. So these are the numbers so far. As you can see, we start out kind of low and then as the terms go on, we, we jump up. I think we had 13 or 14 new students for term two and we're going to, we're excited to see that those numbers continue to move forward. When we talk about the community events, we've listed some of those for 25, 24, 25. And then we're starting to keep tack of, track of the data for how we are promoting the program. And this is just a very short list so far. And I think one of the things we're really excited to say is that last year, we hosted the STEM camp for summer and I got a phone call from a parent not too long ago and they have a fifth grader and an eighth grader and they want to come to our school. And I asked, how did you hear about our program? And they said, my, my child took the STEM camp at your building and they thought it was really cool and the stuff that you had in your classroom. So we're excited to get people in the building so they can see the things that our students and our staff are working on. You know, as we continue to go grow, we're going to look at teacher consistency, we're going to continue to have administrators, administrative support and we're going to continue to juice up our educational components with all the testing and the different strategies. And our staff is excited to be part of the curriculum cycle and, you know, kind of laying things out as to where we've been versus where we're heading and collaborating with the high school as well. And we'll take any questions if you have any.
One of the things that I was wondering about on the data, the reading and math data, you have a relatively small number of students in each one of those categories. And so you're vulnerable to changes or performance of individual students and what that does to your.
We're aware, yes.
That's hard.
It is hard. It makes my heart sad because when somebody gets a hold of that information, they want to, you know, claim that we're not doing good things by our students and we are. And we get a lot of students in the influx, students that are in transition, students that are homeless. And transition, I mean like group homes versus to our, to our program. And so those directly affect some of our, our data and it's hard to combat that because nobody sees the true, the underlying factors when we're testing our students. But our students are working hard. I just, I had mentioned that the number of students that tested for the ACT a few years ago was like five and like last year, just last year, I think we had 14. So we are getting more and more students who are opting to take academics seriously and it's just going to take time for us to establish better data for people to acknowledge.
And I'd imagine you can look at this, not in a conglomerate fashion, you can look at the, the range and look at the, the mean and so you would be able to see where the students are.
Correct.
Yeah, which way it's skewing.
Correct.
Is it surprising to you to have such a big difference between your reading and math scores, I mean 71st percentile to?
I mean.
Is it just that it's really not fair to compare those at all?
I think, we, reading was our goal last year and so that we worked on that a lot last year. So if we were to look at the data from last year with what new data we have versus here, we're very excited to see this big jump. It's our hope that when we are done with term two, because we're offering pre-algebra and geometry right now, we're excited to see what that does. And so our math teachers have decided that we're going to test every three weeks for math, just to kind of see how things are moving. And they're also collaborating with each other in, in utilizing the Math1A software, not software, but textbooks that we just received. So that's exciting to have new materials in the books because we haven't, we haven't had something new in math since 1986.
Okay.
But we're excited.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else?
Go.
Thank you for your work and for being here tonight. All right, superintendent report.
Peggy.
Gotcha.
It's been really hard for me to sit quietly. One thing I wanted to note is, school report cards were publicly released. I love that we had our, that conversation about all the lead measure work and all the, the work that we're doing to ultimately influence some of those, those broader standardized test scores. That's not our only measure and that's why I like that we spent so much time on that because that's, that's the multiple measures approach that we're talking about. But we will send some information out and put some information out on, on where we stood and then at our EdPro December meeting, we'll have an in-depth analysis. And then at our full school board meeting in December, we'll have an analysis. But just broad picture is, our district report card is at the exceeds expectation level. We were up five, we were exceeds last year, but we're still, we're up 5.4 points from last year, so we're at 76.2. All those numbers, there, you can, I think we just need to take a deep dive into that to get into it. But the broad announcement or the broad communication is that we're at an exceeds expectation and within exceeds expectation, we, we grew as a district. So a lot to celebrate there, but to, to really do it justice, we got to dig into it a little bit more. So that's one piece. So my, I, I knew we were going to have lots of long conversations, so I just wanted to touch on two pieces. The first piece is, last week was Veterans Day and one thing that's really awesome about River Falls School District is that every student within the district has an opportunity to, to participate in some level of Veterans Day programming. At the middle school, it's a very organized program. Mark Chapin's here. He and his entire team, I'm mentioning you, but I know that it takes a whole bunch of people to put that program together, but it was, it was very, very good this year as it is always. We had a River Falls High School graduate, David Raspason, who's also a U.S. Naval Aviator speak. I thought he did a really, really good job of connecting service and how we recognize Veterans Day with a very River Falls focused feel, which was, which was fantastic. And then we have four wonderful student speakers, Annie Bells, Grace Renner, Madeline Curtis and Zoe Ashley, who also did just a wonderful job touching on what Veterans Day means to them. And again, a lot of personal components to that, that was wonderful. Meyer Middle, the band and the choir did an excellent job. And then the student council takes that extra step and invites veterans to stay after the program and have that one-to-one piece. So it was awesome. So wonderful middle school program. At the high school, we're lucky to have the American Legion Post 121 do their honor guard and a speech from the commander. A kid did a nice speech and then we have band and choir performances as well. Renaissance Charter does local outreach to veterans, creating buttons and thank yous and then has an honor slideshow as well. And then at the elementary schools, our, our American Legion post, they are busy that day.
They get 13.
They do 13. Yeah, that does not surprise me. It is, it is awesome. And I, and I love to see, I love to see that our students' interaction with that, whether it's a fairly long program at their middle school or, or shorter programs at the high school and elementary, that the level of respect is awesome and, and it's really fun to see the, the multi-general, generational component to that. In addition, different buildings do different things. Westside had different student speakers. They had a Heroes hallway, which is still up, is pretty cool to see. At the Montessori, they have a veterans reception. Greenwood does a breakfast as well as some other components and there's different speakers at each place. So really an awesome opportunity for all of our kids to recognize the importance of Veterans Day and also kind of interact with community members. And then the last piece is, this week is American Education Week and so we'll celebrate that at each building. We're thankful to our food service department who will go above and beyond and, and host a lunch at each of the spaces. And Pat does a really nice job of trying to, trying to zero in on what would be a good kind of special lunch, something extra above and beyond. So we would invite any of the school member board representatives to attend the lunch that if it fits their, their schedule to attend that building lunch. And then the other piece I wanted to highlight is, we, we normally try to do a recognition, a thank you bookmark to promote reading. So we send bookmarks out, but we also highlight some really cool art. And so the two art pieces there are from Haley Perfect, who was a ninth grader at River Falls High School. That's the frog. And then.
She paint that?
I think it's a drawing, but.
It's really good.
Yeah.
It's really good. I like the bow.
And then Ellie Bailey, who's a second grade student at Greenwood.
Isn't that awesome?
And that's a, that's a wonderful, so we thought, just really awesome artwork. And if you've been a teacher for a long time, you kind of get the, the history of them, which we know there's a tradition, but we just think it's really neat also to highlight the artwork. So that's how we're celebrating American Education Week this year.
Thank you, Dave. All right, we will move on to action items. Is there any board member who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, then is there a motion to approve the October 27 regular school board meeting minutes, November 3 special school board meeting minutes, bills that have been submitted for payment, employment recommendations, all of the items that will be second readings of policies under item five, and then all of the items in number six that will be the first reading of revised, revised or new school board policies. Is there a motion, please?
Someone.
Lindsay, who seconded?
Alison.
You did, Alison? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, the motion is carried. All right, we have, this is an annual responsibility that we need to review our district's comprehensive safety plans and so Zach and Kate, oh, Zach.
It was a party period, it wasn't a party.
Okay. I guess they trust you.
Yeah. Zach Campbell, district safety coordinator. Before I talk about safety, we just want to kind of highlight some things that I said here a year ago and what's really happened since then, a lot of stuff behind the scenes. So I'll quickly highlight these and then I'll get into the drills and what happened. So beginning of the summer, all of our building principals set action plans for their buildings for safety and security measures and carried all those out by the beginning of September. We had our building, our annual building security audit, along with all the additional safety measures that took place in our buildings and so audited them this year. We developed a common language with our building operation modes. So what we talk in one building is the exact same as the other building, which was similar, but now we're exactly mirroring everything. So when a student goes from one building to the next, they're familiar with that language already. I met with the fire chief and updated our fire evacuation process, which was mainly just making a couple tweaks and adjustments to, to updated needs. We developed our family communications matrix that is shared amongst our building leaders and then as all the, most of me here got calls during our, our district communication testing earlier this year as well was a piece of that. Speak up, speak out. I know this has been talked about before and I'll probably hit on that here, but we have 20 reports this year, so really having our students own, own the building and what's going on behind the scenes with things where they can feel like they can anonymously report things or things that they see or, or things that they hear, so that administration can act on that. Amongst our buildings, we have 16 Alice Mert evacuation, some more major drills that have happened this year. We've had 16 of them occur, so our students are getting, are into that routine and should be well aware of, of all of our safety measures with that. And then as of today, our digital maps have been submitted. So Dr. Sherman, a few years back, got a grant for us. We've been waiting for the construction to get done and all of that and today was the first day we were finally able to ship that and we will have all, all new digital mapping for our buildings here in the coming months hopefully. So building wise, with our safety drills, our staff at the high school was trained in in-service this year. So we had everybody from RCA and the high school that we, we took time during in-service in August and trained them in Alice training and that was done by our school resource officer, Omaro Jensen. So at high school with our students, the first week of school, they get a safety overview and then they do a complete tour of the building so they know all exits. They get to enter some areas of the building that they're not completely aware of. And, and so they're all aware of during passing times where they may need to exit certain areas of the building, they know where they're at. Within the first month of the building, we did a full, full scheduled evacuation of our building. So all of our students took off to our, our fields in the back so we can get to rally points and kind of understand at least where, where we're at in our teacher's protocol. We learned some lessons through that as well. And then Officer Omaro took time and trained all of our students through our Alice program, through our wind time that he did a little during. So the week of our drills, we do a mental rehearsal day and then two days later, we do the full-fledged drill with our, with our students. From the middle school side of things, they lump it all into one week where we kind of map it out. Their day one on Monday is fire evacuation for them. Day two, they introduce, speak up, speak out, what I have talked about before, so students know where they can find that and locate that. Day three, they get into their Alice intro where they teach the students the Alice process within it and then.
What does Alice mean? I'm sorry.
Yep. Alice is alert, lockdown, inform, counter and evacuate. So that's all of our.
Non-sequential.
We have an intruder, yeah, all non-sequential. If we have an intruder in the building, that is our, that's our students. If you say Alice, every student from kindergarten, high school should know what, what Alice, Alice means. So then they, they finish it with their block and barricade drill where they, we simulate intruder without an intruder coming in and then they move into what they've trained on and then they block and barricade their doors. So I was able to take part with the middle school team and the high school team within that. So with numbers, within that, we send everything out to parents within the first three weeks of school, I believe, give them the opportunity to opt out in between, from RCA to middle school and high school. We actually had zero opt-outs this year. That is in my, my time that I know of, recall that ever happening before. We have classroom discussions with, with everything, so we follow things up where we have staff discussions, the following staff meeting, we talk about staff, what went well, what didn't go well, questions that they may have run into and they have classroom discussions with their students as a follow-up. Elementary treated similar, but a little bit, a little bit different within that and they go sequential three weeks in a row where they spend week one talking about, I'm not, I'm not scared, I'm prepared. And so speaking at their level and they go through actually, actually an activity book with the elementary students to kind of give them prep for, for what we're doing and making it age-appropriate for them. The second week at the elementary level, it's all discussion-based activities, so the students do the tours, just like I talked about at the high school, they will do that at the elementary levels as well. And then where students are allowed to ask questions about certain areas of the building within that. And then week three is when they actually perform the drill. And obviously what we do at the high school level and what they do at the elementary level, while we're using very different languages, they're doing a lot of the exact same things from the block and barricade style of things. So working at the high school and doing that side, it's kind of interesting to come home and have a dinner with an elementary kid, talk about how pumped he was to be able to, to act on some of these exact same things. You're timing it up perfect and just wrapping up the elementary side.
He's doing a great job, Kate.
She needed a bounce over for a commitment over there. So if you, I can turn to the last piece, the lessons learned, since you were having it. I've got everything except for the lessons.
Okay. Sorry, I had to go do my live read aloud for our all-school book club. Um, whoop, whoop. One more week. So just a few of the lessons learned at the elementary level. We had, you know, a few windows that maybe didn't have coverings amongst the different schools and so those have been ordered, revised if they weren't quite big enough. I believe there was one window situation at Westside that Rachel's working on. And then as an administrative team, K12 really, we've been talking about the locking of doors throughout the school day. Maybe you already mentioned that, but just what our practices are on, keeping doors locked and then pulling them shut in an event where we might need to. So just keeping up on those practices.
Are classroom doors locked?
Pardon?
Classroom doors locked.
They're keyed locked and then they're either shut or they're keyed locked and opened. So then in a case of emergency, they can be shut.
So you're not having to fumble with your keys, lock your door, shut it. It's, it remains locked all day and whether it's held open by a doorstop or whatnot, then it can be pulled shut quickly.
Pulled shut.
Yep.
And we have set sidelines remain open, so we want those inside the classroom to be able to see outside the classroom, but still have the ability to close blinds if needed. That's a.
And, and every, obviously every building, every classroom is.
And every, obviously, every building, every classroom is a little bit unique.
Yeah.
In our high school, some of the zones have lots of windows, which is really good for sightlines, but also creates issues of making sure that we can quickly change that. And then other buildings, which are maybe, for example, the middle school, maybe different vintages and different eras, the types of doors. And so that's why it's nice to have, it's nice to have different drills to mentally prepare for each classroom that you happen to be in, how you would respond in that situation.
From an opt-out standpoint, do you have eight elementary?
Five total.
Five total.
Two at West Side. They were from the same family, two at the Montessori, and one at Greenwood. We had another family at Greenwood that opted out of the presentations, but not the actual drills themselves. So, there's just a, in that particular case, it was more about just not wanting their five-year-old to have a sense of something bad might happen at school. They want him to remain a safe place in their mind. So, that is, we have five district-wide at the elementary opt-outs.
One of my, and I raise this periodically, I think, one of my real concerns, I think that because opt-out can present a serious security issue for the rest of the students if, in a case of an emergency, we have one or two students who have no idea what's going on and freak out because they've had no experience or training. So, I'm always concerned about the ability to opt out. There are other things we don't allow students to opt out, but for some reason, we allow students to opt out of this. And that always concerns me. I defer to your judgment on it, but I just wondered, so what do we do in those cases? What do we do with those students?
So I would say our main message in all of this, in particular, I can speak at the elementary level, our main message is, is that you need to do whatever your teacher's asking you to do. And if your teacher is asking you to go to this side of your classroom and then the teacher is closing the door, whether or not you were at the drill, you're going to listen to what your teacher tells you to do. So, that's the main message of the elementary. And we have, we as adults are checking the other places, the bathrooms, the common areas where a student might be on their way to do lunch count, or maybe they are going to the library to exchange their book. So, that's our responsibility as the adults practicing that situation. But at the elementary, definitely more about follow directions. Whoever's giving you directions, that's who you're listening to.
With the high school, we didn't have opt-outs, but they're still, if they were to opt out, they're opting out of the drill. So they're still receiving that multiple weeks of information leading up to everything. They're just not taking part in the actual drill.
So that's opposite, the kids who participated in the drill, but they didn't take the training, right?
That was one.
One, okay.
Correct. Yep.
Do you have anything else? Any questions? I wish you didn't need to do this, but I'm glad you're doing it, because that's how we're going to stay safe. So thank you for your work and for your oversight with all of the schools. So, thanks to both of you and for being here tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the policy ad hoc committee.
Do we need to do an approval?
Oh, sorry about that.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25, 26 school safety.
Is there a second? Monica, thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, the motion is carried. Thank you for keeping me organized here. All right. The policy ad hoc committee met, and we have, we, these are the 10 policies that we had at least some conversation about. So the plan tonight is, Dave is going to go through policies that are listed in numbers one through five. Let's let him get through all of his conversation. And then if there are, I will take a motion in a second, and then we can have any discussion. And then we will go back and do the same thing with numbers six through 10. All right? So we're just going to wait till he gets done talking. All right. Your turn.
Broad feedback here is, there are only slight adjustments to what was proposed at the ad hoc. So, the first one is 2210, which is curriculum development, which is 147 if you're following along in the big packet. The last sentence of the first paragraph is where we added information that wasn't in the initial policy. And that is that any curriculum development is consistent with and designed to achieve the district's philosophy and goals. So that's the, that's the language that was not in the initial policy that is in there now. So that was the adjustment to 2210. Moving on, the back page of that, the second to last paragraph, we changed the language of how we, what is presented to most accurately reflect how we presented. And that's that the superintendent and the director of academic services will provide a curriculum cycle status report to the school board annually. So that reflects that work. Next policy is adoption of course study, 2220. And the adjustment here was in the third paragraph of that policy. And that's that second sentence, each new course should demonstrate a clear alignment with essential academic competencies such as reading, writing, quantitative reasoning, and critical thinking. That was the only adjustment to that one. So moving on then to 2260, that's nondiscrimination and equal access to educational opportunity. The only adjustment that we had to that was, the adjustments that we had to that started on page 152, under definitions. We added the definition for compliance officer to be an employee designated by the school board to be responsible for coordinating the district's efforts, to comply with state and federal nondiscrimination laws, and for receiving formal complaints of pupil discrimination. So, generally, the update to this policy is that that compliance officer role is maybe a little bit more prominent in the investigation phase than what was in our prior policy. So we wanted to be very clear what the role is. So that was on page 152. If you go to 154, under investigation and complaint procedure, the second paragraph, we, as we have done with the other ones that involve the investigation and complaint procedures, we added the language, a detailed description of their understanding of the facts, to be consistent with other complaint procedure policies. That was the only cleanup language there. So that's everything for policy 2260. So if we move to 226001, this is kind of an adjacent policy that in more detail says that we prohibit discrimination based on disability. So there's the broad nondiscrimination policy. Now, this one is specific to disability. And so what we added here is the same definition for compliance officer on page 159. So that person's role is the same there. And then on page 160, we clarified under qualified individual with a disability, we changed the language to be with respect to public early childhood and then the rest of the things, because that's more reflective of the language we use for learning prior to kindergarten. And then the last piece that we added was the same understanding of the facts language under the complaints procedure. So that was 226001. And then the last one we have before we get feedback is 226101, which is the parent and family engagement in Title I programming. And that one is, first, just to highlight that clarifying in the second paragraph, that the proposed policy will be reviewed and approved annually by the school board and distributed to parents and families receiving Title I services. So, we've done the distribution piece, but we haven't maybe formally adopted the plan. And we understand that that's the practice that this policy expects. And then the other thing that we added here was to kind of update language around, I think the prior language talked about watching television, and we know that that's maybe a little broader. We had talked about screen time, but I went with monitoring digital device usage. I was really proud of that.
Sounds so serious.
I was. I thought it was good.
Nicely done.
Sufficiently broad.
A little vocabulary.
Yeah, thank you. That was in, that was in item M on page 169, as well as in F number two on page 170. So, I think, I think that's good. We kind of laugh about it, but I think it's a, it's a good component to that policy.
Television seemed outdated.
Yeah. Well, you still got to watch how much we watch television.
Yes, but not only that. But not only that. All right. Are there any questions about items in one through five that David has just gone through? Okay, so then, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Anything else?
Brief.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, the motion is carried. All right, numbers six through 10, please.
Okay, so moving on to 226102, that's the Title I, parents' right to know. On E number two, there was not a definition for highly qualified, even though we have a definition for highly qualified that we respond to, so we just added that. A highly qualified teacher meets state qualifications and licensing criteria for the grade levels and subject areas in which the teacher provides instruction. So, that's the piece where if that wasn't the case, that we would give notice to families. So, sometimes it's that a teacher's out of area, out of their subject area, and sometimes that it's that they're on a provisional license, and that's the notice that we give to families in that situation. The next policy is district-sponsored clubs and activities, 2430. The only update is, we just cleaned up the policy, the number was wrong on the second paragraph. It should be policy 2105. So we just corrected that policy. It's calling back to the purpose of district-sponsored activities. And then moving to 2451, this is program or curriculum modifications. We clarified the second to last paragraph, which really just shows kind of the process by which somebody could appeal a decision. So the initial written request goes to the building principal, who gives it to the superintendent. The superintendent makes that initial decision and provides in writing the response to the family. And the student within 90 days, and it's 30 days if the student has a disability. And then if the request is denied, we have to be clear why it was denied. And then the parent or the student could request reconsideration. And there's a timeline for that and how they would go about doing it. So we weren't quite as clear in that, and we tried to just streamline it. So that was that one.
You think that's clear enough? The school board is required to render its determination upon review in writing?
Yeah, I think that would be the, we're playing the game of making sure that we don't put in something from a timeline standpoint that's tricky. Every time you're talking about the board convening, it's a little trickier from a timeline standpoint as opposed to the superintendent rendering a decision and those types of things.
Yeah. Can't guarantee that the board can convene in a certain amount of time.
Right. Normally, I mean, we would, obviously, in situations like this, we would make every best effort to do that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Okay, so now we're on 2521. This is a policy that we extensively reviewed very recently, so there's not a lot of adjustments. But we did have a really good conversation on under selection of supplementary instructional material. The language where we're not discriminating, we just, we cut the word student, right? So to make it more clear. So that's the only adjustment that we had there. Ultimately, that policy stays substantially similar to how it was before. And then the last one is student assessment, and we just cleaned up the opt-out language. I don't know why it's, I don't know why that student is bolded. It's not, we'll clean that up. That was, in like, in a bigger, like, the student. That was not intentional. Sometimes you just get, my thumbs are big and I probably bolded it too much. But essentially, that just, we, before, there was confusion over what, was there certain grades you could opt out and can opt out. In practice, a parent can opt out students from these assessments in grades third to 11th. So we just made sure we were clear on that and the process by which they do it.
Thank you. I'll take a motion first, and then we can have discussion. So is there a motion to approve the first reading of Niola policies that are listed in items six through 10?
So moved.
Thank you, Monica. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Allison. Any discussions, questions, or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, the motion is carried. All right, Ellen, I'll turn to you for an educational program update.
On Monday, November 10th, the ed program committee met, and we had several items to work on, only one for action. Each, every two years, we have to approve the girls hockey co-op. And what the hockey co-op is, is River Falls and Baldwin, Woodville, and St. Croix Central High School share hockey team, women, a girls hockey team. And we need to approve that. So David Crell was here, our activities director, to talk us through that. This has worked very well in the past. We answered some questions. And we approved it as a committee. And in fact, before I move on to the rest of them, I would move that the board approve that hockey co-op agreement.
Second. Thank you, Allison. I'll take Lindsay. I mean, Ellen. Thank you, Lindsay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, the motion is carried. All right.
Two really good updates. One was on Act 20. Act 20 is legislation that was passed last year by the legislature that has some specific requirements regarding reading and literacy in our schools. And we've been working very closely with the state requirements on that. Our team has been doing an awful lot to make, to put this in place. So we had an update on that. Amy Wise, co-director of academic services, talked to us about it. We're really making some progress. There's some very interesting things going on in that. And then we had a curriculum review. Amy also presented, and along with four of our teachers, stage five of our K through 12 ELD program. And not only did this kind of give us an update on where we are with teaching, language arts in the district and how that's going, but we really had the presentation by four of our classroom teachers and people involved with classroom teachers, as to just how this takes place, examples of how it takes place. And one of the fun things about being in that committee is to just hear from our teachers and staff members periodically about what they're doing. It's really kind of exciting. And it was kind of rewarding to, it was very rewarding to listen to the presentation. So, some good progress there as well.
All right. Thank you. Mike?
All right. We also met, our financial facility committee met also on Monday, November 10th. First up was kind of a review of the facility projects update. The summer of 2025 projects are at a substantial completion, and they're beginning the process of looking at what else we need to complete for 2026. All of our funds must be spent by the June of 2027. And so, we're just in the planning process for that next wave of next summer projects. We had a discussion regarding the information nights we had at our new facilities. We had an open house at the bus garage. We had an open house at the high school. So the, we had, we had a few visitors, not a ton. So, there was a lot of non-school activities or a lot of activity at the high school going on. So we had some visitors stop in that just happened to be there for a swimming lesson or for a practice of some sort. So we had some visitors there. Lynette talked about it. The highlight of the transportation center was a family that came in with two little boys that really had an interest in school buses and wanted to see the inside of school buses. So, they had a great, and they also wanted to see where the school buses slept at night. So, that was the highlight there. So, it was good, a good discussion there. And we appreciate people stopping in and taking a look at our new facilities. We also went through the 2526 budget update. We've received the first of our four state equalization payments that we get throughout the year. The first special ed aid reimbursement we will be receiving in this month. And our final item was Fund 80. Fund 80 is, has to do with our, our kids' club revenue, look, kids' club and our community ads. So we just had a discussion regarding kind of the history of those revenues and expenses. We had a discussion right now, the levy is set based on a lump sum. We've discussed potentially, instead of just doing a lump sum, looking at percentages of the overall budget to set those, to set that every year. Just because if you keep at that lump sum, if you don't increase it, you're kind of falling behind. And so we've seen that happen a little bit with those funds. So, we're talking, in the future, going to be talking about potentially having the levy set by, based on us, kind of like we do with our fund balance now in our, in our general fund, as a percentage of overall revenue. So, those will be discussions we'll be having at future meetings.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Personnel also met on November 10th. It was the third in a triple header. We did not take any action, but we still had good discussion. We heard a report about the paraprofessional mentor program that we have that is doing really important work supporting the mentors that we have. Nate is keeping track of all of that, engaging, looking at the one-on-one meetings that we have to help them become confident in the work that they do with our students. We also discussed the student-to-staff ratio and comparables to other districts so that we could see where we rate. And one thing that is very clear is, we do not, according to the, we compare ourselves to other districts around us, we certainly are not too heavy in terms of the ratio of student to staff. So we do, we accomplish a lot. That's an important thing for us to be proud of. We also talked about some preliminary staff planning for next year, at least in terms of the process. There are no definite things yet. And the committee also talked about the district wellness program, so that we have a wellness program that has a variety of com- a wellness program that has a variety of components. The individual buildings are able to come up with plans that are then reported to the district-wide wellness team. And then the financial resources are allocated to the schools according to the percentage of employees at that building, of the percentage of the whole employees in the district. So, and then we also went into a closed session to approve an early retirement request or to consider that. So anything you want to add?
No, that was great.
Anything else? All right. Then we are going to move on to letter G, which is to approve the second reading of revised school board policy 830. This is the rule, which governs the use of district facilities, grounds, and equipment. You'll perhaps remember when we talked about this last time, it's very minor changes. It's adding amounts for our new spaces. So is there a motion to approve the second reading? Thank you, Bo. Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carried. It's really exciting to be able to offer those spaces. Okay. Do we have any proposed items for future agendas? Then we are scheduling the upcoming meetings. The policy ad hoc committee will meet Monday, December 1st at 6:00. Educational program committee will meet Monday, December 8th at 6:00. Finance and facilities will meet Monday, December 8th at 7:00 or immediately following the educational program meeting. Personnel will meet Monday, December 8th at 8:00 or immediately following finance and facilities, so another triple header. And then the next regular board meeting will be Monday, December 15th at 6:00. All of those meetings will be here in the conference room. And at this point, I do need to read this whole thing, but I would like to have a motion to move into closed session. So would somebody please make the motion pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 1985-1C, which permits convening into closed session for the purpose of considering, considering the employment of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction to discuss an early retirement quest, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 1985-1E, which permits convening into closed session for the purpose of deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any quasi-judicial hearing before that governmental body, and Wisconsin statute 19 point 85-1F, which permits convening into closed session for the purpose of considering disciplinary data of specific persons, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such data, to review and to approve the November 3rd, 2025 special school board